And they're like, "Go ahead, go ahead."
Can't say the time you're up to do.
I have to go to two different hospitals to get on to work.
Oh geez.
I'm in like really...
They're saying Julian Favre, and they wrote a pattern on how to make those masks.
Oh, I see.
And they're making them, and you can think of them.
Yeah, they're doing a patch for masks in almost two hospitals.
And it tells you, well, it really was very explicit, everything you needed besides...
And considering the providing material.
Oh, Julian's mask, yes.
And they'll even provide a classroom space, but unfortunately only two people are going to sit in the classroom.
Well, they said we couldn't, but this is...
I think they closed the stores. It's a good website, pick up. At least last day, I come up with that.
That's what I've seen last night. Anything's possible.
I ripped it in, that's all right. Very casual.
Wearing the strip coat.
Yeah, that's right.
People are wearing purple.
And, say thanks, thank you.
I'll be standing right there.
No, I don't want to be on camera. So you have to get all the others.
Well, I got...
You want to change that.
Heidi, we've got three different cameras recording this right now, so... That's way too close. I'll pick the one that has your best side, huh?
The mugshot.
Older feller.
I'm sorry to say the internet has been misbehaving this morning. I'm getting a clear signal on my phone, but none on the computer.
That's because you need it.
I know. You know, it's been sluggish this week, and the phone is, like I said, it's a clear signal, but the computers are just not...
Everybody does sit on their...
Probably, but, you know, but the router seems to be working fine, the, you know, the upload stream is working fine, it's just can't handle it.
Ten, ten percent down our mic.
That's why, when I just take that back.
So, but we're recording things, and we'll post them later when, you know, the internet decides to let us do that. So, thank you for coming. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for your goodness and your grace and your mercy to us all the time. You daily and richly provide everything that we need to support this body of life, even in a time of difficulty and crisis and lack of toilet paper and stuff like that. So we pray that you'll continue to make us aware of your provision for us, and how much you care for us and how much you love us. Over this next hour, or maybe a little bit less, as we talk about what life is like among us and what life is like in Christ the King, or could be like, we ask you to bless us and give us your mercy and your peace in all things, in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay. You don't need to watch, you don't need to pay attention to that necessarily. In fact, I could turn the monitor off if you wanted. I had that out here because we hope people would be able to join us like in a conference call or something, and that's just isn't going to work today. So that's all right. Like I said, we'll record this, and then put it up later online, but, you know, feel free to speak your mind. Don't, you don't have to...
Careful.
It's church after all.
You haven't taken attendance yet.
Guess what's happened in my mind? You right?
People will recognize your voice. So, how's everybody doing? You're here, so you're doing at least that well.
So far, so good.
So far, so good.
Bored.
Bored?
Bored. There's nothing to do.
I'll send you some of my work, and you can do some...
I'm already doing some Bible study, and we haven't even, I mean, this is the first week we are in Bible, and I'm already...
All right, so Pam mentioned Bible study, and I was hoping, I don't know if we can do this. I was hoping that maybe within another week, sometime this week, we could do something like a conference call, Bible study or something, and just open it up and can either phone in or, you know, watch it, that we could do that. Hopefully, this thing that's going on this morning, whatever it is, is only temporary, maybe we can do something with a thing where we could at least do a, you know, you in your home and I could be here, and we could do a lot of this together. But we'll see how that works, I just don't know. Like I said, it's, oh, you could do this, you could do this, and, but, I understand. However, we're, you know, there are some other folks that are doing some things, and I'll be sending... Let me ask this. Are you getting emails? Who's getting, who's getting emails from? Ray is.
Oh.
Well, you don't know. Talk to Ray.
I had a frontier.
You have a frontier?
And they shut me down.
Oh, gosh. All right.
That's because they picked up new partners, I guess. American broadband is out, and they brought in a new one from Detroit. And, back in December, they said, "If you don't do this correctly," or whatever, we shut you down.
So you didn't? So they did?
I, my mail in December is like this. And I'm supposed to stop and not read bills and read everything. So, and it took me a while to figure it out. Because, you know, I am, "Who is this vendor? I never had this internet bill before." So on and so forth, and they did send something out, but that was like December 3rd. And then they said, "By March 23rd, if you're not settled in, uh, we shut you down." Well, of course, I didn't pay the bill, because I didn't know who the heck was billing. That could be something that's actually inherent in their design, not an accident.
I don't know. I don't know, um, just, you know, I'll call you this week. I'll probably call you. You still have a phone, right? As far as you know.
I'm not sure to tell you the truth.
Should I call you now? Do you have your phone with you? Make sure you have the phone?
I got it.
You've got it? Okay, let me call it right now and see if you've got it.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
No, it was a mobile number, do I need to call your home number? I don't need the landline. Okay, what's, what's the number? You gotta have the wrong number.
So you went down the...
Three zero four two nine...
Yep.
Fifty, fifty-seven, fifty-seven four nine.
I don't know the number, I don't know who called myself.
Where's your elevator?
I know, I think your voice...
Did you, did you hang up, Bill?
Four two one five seven four nine.
Are you still, are you baby still? I did not ever really...
Four two one... Three zero... Six two four...
Six seven four. Yep. Yep. I hear you. Can you hear me now? All right, hey! All right. Good. All right, we got a good number for Belle Doreen. Yay! Praise the Lord, we got something else today, okay? Add to a contact. Okay. We're good. That works. We're good. All right, how about, how about anybody else doing okay? Otherwise, okay, just kind of...
Because we really can't tell you the real facts, you know that.
Which are?
What?
Which are? That you're bored, you're driving each other crazy.
No, it's not like, you know, because you're going to shopping and stocking up, you just graze all day long.
Well, speaking of grazing, I talked to the Todds yesterday, and Christie still has cases of Girl Scout cookies.
I've hit those.
And Brandon said, Brandon said, you know, "It's hard to work at home when those cookies are out in the garage." So if you want Girl Scout cookies, call Christie, she's still got at least one case of each type, so, but no dosidose. How you guys doing?
We're doing good.
Yeah?
Just try to stay busy and maybe get out in the yard and rake some leaves, some leaves in the yard, and go for a walk.
Walk?
You know, and, and the thing is, is I haven't really stopped my life, I mean, granted, the businesses I call on in packaging, a couple of them have shut down for a couple of weeks. You know, it's, it's phone calls, and being a salesperson, you're on the phone, calling your customers, saying, "Hey, we're here for you, we support you, you know, we've got enough product." If you're calling me for hand sanitizer, toilet tissue, paper towels, you know, it's, it's a tough going right now. You know, there's two weeks out.
Sure.
And then, you know, I'm not going to commit, because two weeks come, getting that phone call. I'm sorry, but, you know, and David's working at Gordon Food Service. I mean, it's just, I mean, their goal, weekly goal, they hit it by Tuesday. You know, so he's been working some overtime and trying to keep him healthy, and Donna's work, she works part-time for Medina, City of Medina, they kind of cut her hours a little bit, so, stay tuned. You know, this week is going to be the week that we find out, you know, with businesses and stuff like that, what's going to shut down and what's going to stay open.
My daughter Cory sent me a text yesterday, and she said, "Ma'am, pray for me." She's, she's a funeral director in Georgia, and they have nine deaths, four of them are the virus. And she said, "It's so hard to tell a family, you can't have calling hours or a service for your loved one."
Sure.
Basically, the head of the corporation is kind of saying, "We're going to have to, the company will have to make plans for their..." And the way she said, "Our families just are not accepting that, it's just..."
No.
"The hard to do."
Of course not. And Tham and I were talking about this yesterday, and thinking, you know, what I could see happening, people might not like it, but what I could see happening as a pastor and maybe from a funeral point, is that we'll have, you know, we may have a small graveside service with just the family, but I could foresee that a lot of family are going to have cremations, and then we'll have a memorial service later. So when the all, you know, when they finally give us an all-clear, we're going to be stacking up the memorial services, probably. And I know families don't like that, because, you know, funerals are a good ti, you know...
Closure, you know.
But, you know, one of the things I said to my dad when I was thinking about the call here to Lowdy was, "I think I really want to come to Ohio, because I'm tired of missing all the good funerals."
You're a witness for?
You know, I've had a couple, an aunt and uncle, and we're not...
They ain't as good as they used to be, though. I got, I'm from Pollock's, buddy.
Yeah, I know.
I saw these after people died, man. When I was a little kid, and I was like, "Oh, man."
I know. I know, I served among the slow blocks in Chicago, you know, they're kind of the same way. You want some sleeve events with that? Come on, pastor.
You're all, they don't get through the mic, so you have another funeral right away.
Yeah. Yeah, but I, I foresee that that, that could be happening, for sure.
When our friend passed away at the funeral in Macedonia, it was supposedly the last get-together, because they were going from the media family, only inside the funeral parlor. And the, the, the party afterward, they had the catering, it was terminated after we left.
Yeah.
So it's like...
Yeah. That was Bernie.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and again, we're sorry to hear about Bernie. She was bad, she's been here since, yeah, it does happen, but, you know, but she's been here since.
It's like it's been a hard time. I saw Hallmark card like that.
He smiled.
He's laughing.
I think he started with an S for his phone.
You know, there's one bright side of this.
We expect nothing less. Go ahead.
There's one bright side to this. A little on working, man, it sure is nice. All the idiots ain't out there. My crew's out in my truck and go.
I'm sorry, I think the idiots are left on the road, because I had to go to my mom's house on, what was that, to Thursday? I swear it was just idiots as I was driving north on 71.
Because they're having work.
Yeah. Idiots were on the road.
Getting away from the kids.
All the parents leaving the kids. "Oh, my God, get, take it, take it."
What else? Look, Stephanie and Joey sent me, I'll just throw it on my phone, he sent me a text, well, because only Joey can. It was a, thank you.
This might take a while. Here's come off one of her rockets.
I did, and it was day three of the quarantine, and already I'm tired of babysitting my grandmother's grandkids.
The variations of those are like, are like, you know, here's homeschooling. One has already been suspended, and the teacher's going to be...
One of the side effects of this, we figured out, is going to be the elimination of homeless people and those who are on the poor side of life.
Because?
Coronavirus.
Yeah, they don't have the resources to fight it.
We eliminate the creature dead.
That's possible. That's possible, and that's a sad thing. That's a sad thing. You know, go ahead, Dan.
I was just, somebody made a comment that in about three to four weeks, we're going to know the true hair color of everybody.
That's true. That's true. A good reason, a good reason not to come to church.
We're all just down with hands. Eyebrows real thick.
Go back to those old days, you know.
My bush kids are coming back.
There you go.
You said something this morning about...
I'm not worried about hair color. Go ahead, what?
How many peo, they're not really predicting what...
How many people work here?
You're an idiot.
And it was on the news, the day, yesterday or the day before, eighty-seven thousand is what I heard, that had been had virus and come through worldwide. Worldwide.
And I'm glad that somebody has said that, you know, because that's, you know, we're so...
Yeah, it's always looking bad.
So focused on who's got it and who's dying from it, and, you know, we very seldom hear those days that come.
Well, the earth's getting a breather, I mean, the air's getting cleaner, the water's...
Well, that's what they said, there's dolphins in Venice. Yeah.
Well, Vicki said, she swears that back in January, when she, her and Lucas were real sick, that now looking back, that that's what they had to have had, because every test that they ran on both of them were negative. And all the, all the kids that she's been seeing, they test for strep and everything else, and they're all negative.
Yeah.
So who knows how many have had it already, our family. Because Lucas doesn't get sick, and he was down for four days, he slept nonstop, didn't eat. Which is unusual for him.
Well, I know. You just don't know. I mentioned my friend Pastor Dave McCloskey, who's in Steubenville. He, he has a member who's in hospice, and the family called him and said, "Could you come and bring communion?" You know, because he's dying. And so Dave went over to the hospice center, and they turned him back, because he had a temperature over a hundred point one. And he didn't know it, he was like... You know, so he called me, and I was like, you know, he's right on the cusp, and he had Parkinson's, he's been fighting Parkinson's, so I think he's a little more of a risk. But he called me, and he said, because we're friends, but also he said, "I just want to know, I couldn't get there to give him communion." He said, "Do you think it'd be all right if I just gave the communion set to our head elder and sent him over there, and could he give communion?" I said, "You know, if it's all right with the family, and it's all right with him, and if they'll let him in there, I don't see why not." You know? There's been a lot of conversation among the pastors about the whole worship and communion and all that other stuff kind of thing, and, and we have in the Missouri Synod, we have a group called the Commission on Theology and Church Relations, which is a big, long name, but we ask them these kinds of questions, you know, these kinds of theological ponderous questions, and ask them for opinions, you know, and one of the opinions was, "Well, what if the pastor consecrates communion on the altar, and then the elder just takes the wafer to somebody?" And the CTCR said, "Yeah, no, we haven't been doing it." You know, we don't, you know, we don't want to separate what happens at the altar with what happens at the mouth unless you're present. So, we've never really had, in the Lutheran Church, we've never really had like, what do they call them in the Catholic Church, communion visitors or something like that, what do they call them? Eucharistic ministers, we've never had those, where we say, "Okay, this has been consecrated, so you could take this out into, you know, the sick people." We'd much rather say, "Just go there and do the service." And that's what I do with shunnings, you know, we have a little prayer, we have the creed, the Lord's Prayer, and then I say, you know, "This is the body of Christ," and do that, and we have communion together.
And that's the pastor.
And that's what I do, right. Right, but I'm saying, that's what I do, I don't just say, "Well, this has already been consecrated, so here." But I've always done that. Now, if, in case of emergency, if we had, like in Dave's situation, I don't see anything wrong with saying to the elder, "Go and do the same thing." You know, I authorize you as a pastor to do that. But we don't want to separate what happens up there from what happens here. Pam?
Our deacons, when they made visits to hospitals and so on, they did, they did the service.
Yeah.
And did communion.
Yeah. Yeah. So...
I don't know, I feel something was missing if you didn't do the service or communion.
Yeah, I know, and we did it with your mom, we did a little service.
I think if we didn't have it, it just wouldn't have been the same.
No, right. Right. Although I know pastors who do, who do that, you know, they just go and they have, you know, honors communion. But I'd rather do, you know, because when I've done it with shunnings, you know, people, sometimes pastors are like, "Well, how, you know, when you go visit somebody who's shunning at home, how long is that visit?" And I'm like, "About an hour." And they're like, "Well, it only takes ten minutes to do communion." I said, "Yeah, but the other fifty minutes is catching up." Because oftentimes with shunnings, you know, I'm, I'm the only contact they have with the congregation in a month, or six weeks, you know? And then they want to know, "How's Heidi and Ed? How's Jen and Ron? You know, how's Reese's? You know, how's the kids?" So we talk, you know, so I, you know, I bring the gossip. But...
You bring the good news.
It's the good news, too, because we have that service, and people appreciate that service, too.
Back to the numbers before.
Oh, yeah.
This is globally, three hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred thirteen cases, ninety-six thousand ten people recovered.
Okay.
Thirteen thousand six hundred forty-three deaths.
Okay. So there are some that are still in the process, one way or another, but, you know, but, okay. Now, what's your authority?
CDC.
Oh, CDC, okay, well, we'll go with CDC. You're a scientist.
Going CDC.
Okay. I wanted to, I sent a survey out, and some of you responded to the survey when the internet was working, so that was good, and I appreciate that, actually, it was working earlier this morning, and I appreciate that. And we had a lot of questions on the survey, and a lot of things that we wanted to hear from you, that I wanted to hear from you, about what we could, could be doing or should be doing here in Christ the King. And so I want to share with you some of those things, not only the result of the survey, but the result of a lot of conversations that I've been having with some of you, with other pastors, with our district officers and so forth. First, let me say this. Almost every pastor that I know is, has been wrestling with this. You know? Should we even have this? Should we cancel services? Should we do whatever and that kind of stuff? Okay? When the, when they first came out and said, "No gatherings of over fifty people," I said, "Well, you know..." Piece of cake, we got that nailed, and we hardly ever have a service of over fifty people. But I wanted to be able, you know, we all, all pastors, like a lot of people, we struggle with, what can we do to, what can we do to, for our people on several fronts? What can we do to provide as much a sense of normality as we possibly can? Okay? So, keep as much of the normal schedule as we can, and when you come here on a Sunday morning, we'll keep the worship service as it is. So, you know, as much a sense of normality. Another thing that we always, we all say we want to do is, we want to, pastors, we want to say, part of our job is to provide the spiritual and faith perspective that enables us to keep our anxieties a little bit lower. You know, we understand that people are going to be anxious, but if we can help through the gospel, through the prayers, through what is going on in churches, if we can say, "Can we take your anxiety down just one notch?" You know? Can we help you do that? Can we help you with, you know, your faith, whatever questions you might have, then that's part of our, that's part of what we want to do also. Take the anx, take one notch off the anxiety and put it on Jesus for them. And I think that'll, that'll be helpful for everyone. And the third thing we want to do is to be able to, to provide a continuous flow of resources for people who can't or choose not to come. So if you don't come, what do we do? What do we have for worship services? What do we have for prayers? I've been sending out, I started sending out a daily email this weekend, I, I put a psalm and a prayer on those. Pastor Hansel up in Grace Church, Grace Lutheran Church of Lakewood. He has a whole devotion, it's a prayer and a psalm, and then a meditation, he puts that on the church Facebook page every day. Okay, so you can go to Facebook and look for great, or, you know, I mean, I sent that out as an email, too, so we'll do that. We'll continue to do that. I developed a whole website, it is connected, a whole webpage is connected to our website, if you had a chance to look at that. It's got all kinds of resources, all kinds of things you could do. We have, believe it or not, the Missouri Synod has a radio station called KFUL, that's on, it's been around for decades, and, but it's online. So you can go online, and you can listen to all kinds of podcasts and broadcasts and all kinds of other stuff, from a Lutheran perspective, for all kinds of stuff like that. You can find that link on that webpage. If you go to our church webpage, there's a little box, can't... If you go to our church webpage, there's a little box, can't miss it. It says, click on the cross, and then it will go right to this virus webpage. Have anybody tried that? Yeah, did it work for you? Oh, okay, it worked. Yeah, yeah. I'm always glad when it works for somebody who isn't me, you know? Okay, so there's that. There's a deaconess named Mary Morby, who has a whole list of all kinds of resources and whatnot, including free Lutheran resources for all kinds of reasons. So if you've got grandkids that you're taking care of, or if you know of kids, aunts, you know, nieces and nephews, and say, here's some activities, here's some things they can do, stuff like that. We're going to start putting devotions for families to do in the, in the emails periodically, so that you have those spiritual resources and, and so that you're not just, okay, now that we've done with our homework, and we've watched Frozen for the eighteenth time, you know, and we're on the eighty-fifth episode of Naked and Afraid, isn't there anything that we can do? Yes, there are some things we can do. Some of that's on there. John?
Well, we can always have auto worship, like Sunday morning at the drive-in. We can put a picnic table out there in front of the door, and we can all sit in our car and listen. We don't have to get together.
Well, that's, that's been suggested by a number of places, and in fact, you know, what was that?
Mount Sinai, they're doing it.
Yeah, today.
Mount Sinai.
It was on the news last night.
Okay. Yeah, all you need is a short-range FM transmitter for a couple hundred bucks, plug it into the sound system, and everything's in the part. So part of that is, you know, part of that is how do we make accommodations? You know, how do we make accommodations? Although if you go on Amazon, Amazon, and look for a short-range FM transmitter, you won't get it. They're like, they're not available right now. But, yeah, and then you have to do sit in your car tonight, FM radio, and you can get the worship.
You direct to communion.
Well, and, you know, and some people are suggesting that also. You know, you have the worship service, and then the pastor goes out with communion in the parking lot and gives it, so you can stay in your car.
Twenty-four degrees today.
Well, you know, yeah, or the other day when it was pouring down rain, you know, if that happens on a Sunday morning, it's kind of, you know, you could do this in Florida or California, but not easily in Ohio in March.
If you weren't sick, you will be good.
Yeah, that's right. So, I mean, those are options and things that people are thinking of. Other things that people are thinking of is just, is just to say, okay, we're not going to have the worship service here, so y'all stay home with the pastor, and Joanne are going to come, and they're going to do the service as if everybody was here to empty church. And I don't have any intention of doing that, okay? Because to me, that's kind of like, you know, Jimmy Fallon saying, you know, it's just abandoned me here, and we're doing a show to an empty studio. And, you know, we watched that for a while, but it was really awkward for them, you know? You could tell that, you know? It just was. And I don't, I don't think it's the same, you know? If we ever, if we get to the point where we have to cancel, you know, and say, we're not going to have services here, what I, what I would do would be two things. I would say, I'll do my best to have some kind of time of prayer, conversation like this, you know, a sermon-ish thing like this, that would then be recorded and put, you know, or, you know. But if you want to watch an actual worship service at Christ the King, there's a hundred of them on the Facebook page. We've been doing it for a year, and they're all on the Facebook page. I haven't taken any of them off. So if you want to watch a worship service at home, do an actual worship service that we've recorded. I'm not going to say, I'm going to give you a fake worship service and pretend that you're here. I, I don't think that's to your benefit or to mine. But I, I would do, you know, I would do a conversation like this. Say, let's pray together. Let's read scripture together. Let's hear what this is saying to us. Does that sound okay?
That'd be great. I have a friend whose church is not meeting because they're all elderly, and that's what their pastor's doing.
Yeah.
From her, from her office, she's doing it.
Yeah.
So what are we?
We're all elderly, too.
Oh, really?
We're getting there.
I saw that little bitch, and it was just having a sermon for seventy, and it was like, well.
Why change her name then?
I said something, you know, a week ago, Carol Gresh called me, and she said, well, you know, we're just not coming and whatnot, and your choir, and then. She said, I was, I was thinking of going to church the other day, getting ready to go to church, and Dave came in and said, what are you doing? She said, I'm getting ready to go to church. He said, we're seventy-three and seventy-one. And so Carol said, you know, we can't, you know, he was right, we're elderly. I said, you're not elderly. His parents made it into their nineties. He's got four years to go. What are you talking about?
Apologies.
So. But, you know, that's, that's another thing, too, is that, you know, I've said, I don't, maybe not to you all necessarily, I, I don't want to, let me say it this way. One of the reasons we can, I'm continuing to do this is because I want you to have the choice of what you want to do on a Sunday morning. People make that choice all the time. And I don't want to shut you out from that choice by saying, we're not having it, so, you know, I don't know what you're going to do. I don't want to shut you out from that choice if we don't have to do it. Now, if a situation changes somewhere or another, like if, you know, the governor says, a better shelter in place, or we're going to send the cops out, that might be a different story. Or if I wake up in the morning and have a, you know, a hundred and four fever, you know, things are going to change and hurt. But if you're willing, none of that will happen. But I want you to still have that choice, and to make that choice based on your situation, how you feel, and, and what's going on in your life. And some folks have said, you know, all right, I'm going to choose not to come for a while. And that's fine. And I want everybody to understand that that's fine, and that nobody's going to go to hell because you didn't come to church, you know? Nobody's going to get, you know, thirty lashes with a wet loom because you didn't come to church. And we're not going to shame anybody for not coming. We rejoice in everybody, whether you're here or not, because you're all precious children of God, all precious people of God, to Him and to me. So, but I don't want to take a choice away from you unnecessarily. So we'll continue to do this as long as possible. Jan?
I just have a question. If for some reason church does have to stop for a while, is there a way that people could get their offerings to the church? Because if we don't get to come to church, is there a way like to put a slot in the church door or something, where, you know, they have a drop-off, like our insurance company now? Anything like that, or mail the checks?
Well, we can do, what we can do is, and I, you know, I, it was just brought to my attention earlier, mailing, mailing the offering in is always an option. But I need to put the post office box in the email or whatever, you know, because the post office box number is not listed necessarily. So I will make, make sure to put that out there so that if you have to mail it in, that would really be the easiest thing. If you want to send an offering in, just mail it.
Do they still do the automatic, if you set it up, if you have the church's routing number and account number, would they still set it up as, if you have a checking account, you can automatically have it set up where they send it to the churches, the offerings that?
I, I don't know the answer to that. You'd have to ask the bank.
You couldn't keep track of it then.
Right, right now, the best thing I would say is to just, you know, send it in by mail. And by the way, just so that it's out there, the church address is Christ the King Lutheran Church, Post Office Box 183, Lodeite, Ohio 44254. I'm saying that because it's been recorded and it's going to get out there soon.
Oh, okay.
Okay, if I, in case I forget to, to post it. But it's Post Office Box 183, Lodeite, Ohio 44254. That's still the best way.
Okay.
I was, so let me ask you this. What would you think about, you know, because you're here, what do you think if we set up some kind of online payment through something like PayPal or something else? If we did that so that you could give offerings that way, would you, how many would think about maybe doing it that way?
The pastor, that would be hard to keep track for the counters.
I understand that. I understand that, but it would be easier for the people for something. Okay, I saw like one hand who might be interested, or maybe two who might be interested in doing it that way. But it was just something to think about. All right, I want to share with you some of the things that were said in the survey, and some of the things that we've been talking about. And I, I'll read these off so you can see them. One of the, I, I, there's all kinds of ideas. I've got, here's my list. There's a list of forty-six different ideas that have been suggested in the last week as to what we should do. And so this list, the green list, is the things that we're already doing. And for the most part, people who filled out the survey are like, yeah, keep doing it. Okay? So live stream worship, when the internet works, it seems to be good. Okay? Move the offering plate to the door, so that we're not passing the plate back and forth, and, because some are concerned about multiple touching of stuff. And during the piece of the Lord, last week, we showed you how to make the sign of the cross, and we did it again today. And so we're going to do that. I really would like to get back to shaking hands one of these times, because, you know, that just means so much to everybody, that personal touch. But for the time being, we'll make the sign of the cross. We did this this morning. We used to have these little trash bins at the end of the pew to just put the communion cups in, and I asked Heidi to bring those back. So I hope you figured that out this morning. I forgot to say something about it. Rather than putting them in the tray and then having the cups stack up, and then everybody's cups are stacked up, and all that other kind of stuff. And whoever have to, has to empty it out gets everybody's germs, you know, so this way. I'm going to try to send out pretty much daily emails, at least multiple times a week. You know, I don't know that, anyway, so we'll do that. We'll continue to have, to do as much as I can to get the word out on various things. We've got a Facebook page. We've got some, I've got a Twitter account, I've got Instagram, and we've got the church website. If you go to the church website, there's that new page, like I said, go to the church website, and right there, there's a page that says, click on the cross to go to our coronavirus thing. Click on the picture of the cross, and you go right there. Talking about doing video-based meetings, like video conferencing, which seem to work well when they work. This warning is not going to be an illustration of that. But if you're using them at work, you're using them at work? Like Zoom or something?
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah, they work okay. But, you know, if you've never done a Zoom meeting before, for the first time, it's like watching Hollywood Squares. All right? Because you got all these little, you know. But they seem to work. If we need to do that, we'll do that. But we don't have a lot of meetings anyway, I suppose. This new webpage that I said, Seasons of Grace webpage, it's, it's all of the resources, all of the things, latest schedule changes. I'm going to keep that up to date as much as possible, changes, postponements, all that kind of stuff. And that's the one you can get to right from the Christ the King website. It's just a separate webpage. Food safety protocols, people are concerned about that. You know, our altar guild has always been good about setting up in terms of, you know, sanitizing, washing, even using food gloves, you know, and that kind of stuff, to set up communion. So I'm not concerned about the setup at all. Pastor and elders, and there's Purell up at the altar. If the elders are the communion assistant, forget it, back there, there's Purell at the altar, so that just before, you know, distribution, we do that, too. Please, people said, please don't shake hands. And so we've been kind of saying, yeah, don't shake hands, we'd like to, but wave, or this, or, you know, sign of the cross, or whatever. And then, of course, please stay home if you have, if you're symptomatic, you know? And even if you're not, if you feel like you're more at risk, then staying home is a good thing to do. But, you know, if you wake up in the morning and you, you know, and they have a fever of a hundred and one, then maybe you ought to stay home, you know, just for your sake and everybody else's. So we're already talking about those things, and already doing those things. Like I mentioned this morning, Larry came in and said he was ninety-eight point one, and I said, this is a good time to be below average. Okay? So all these things are things that we're already doing, okay? Comments, thoughts? Questions? Okay. These are some things that have been suggested that are, and I'll talk about these, that we're contemplating. Okay? I'm contemplating, and, and I'm getting some feedback and whatnot from you all and from other people. So we're contemplating these things. Some kind of like a fireside chat video with devotions, announcements, and prayers, like I was talking before, instead of a worship service and trying to say, we're going to have an artificial worship service here. Just have like a fireside chat, and like, you know, that goes back to the days of FDR, and nobody here remembers him, because that was before all of our times, mostly. But, but, you know, just to have a conversation. So I might do that. Posting the recorded services to the website. You know, I, I usually just leave them, I put it, I leave them on YouTube, and I put a link to it in the email, but I might post them on the website as well, just so that that fall in one place. A possibility that I thought was, if we really want to get serious about social distancing, what we could do would be, during this nine-thirty hour, just add a third worship service, and just kind of thin the herd, you know? So you could decide whether you want to come a little bit later or a little bit earlier. And nobody liked that. When we sent the survey out, everybody's like, this is a bad idea, you know? So I think you all like the group that you're with, and the time that you come. And, and so I think we're going to dump that one. Shortened worship services, primarily so that we can get a little more people movement. If we added in a nine-thirty service, we could get a little more movement of people in the parking lot. So I don't think we need to shorten them. Maybe we need to shorten a sermon, but we don't need to shorten the worship service. But Wayne had actually sent a list and said, here's what, you know, here's a possible thing. And I, I said, you know, so he had basically said, you know, leave everything in the worship service, but take all of the liturgical things out, like, you know, holy, that kind of stuff, and, you know, the nuptum medus and the crema. And I said, I said, well, there's a couple of things. I said, first of all, Joanne has said she's not, it was a rel, she's not going to be here for a while, okay? She's in that multiple risk category. And Patrick's not going to be here for a while. So I'm going to have to make CDs for all the services anyway. Okay? And from my point of view, it would be better to maybe take a hymn out, but leave the liturgical parts in for a couple of reasons. One is, we've got all the liturgical parts recorded on the organ for like five, four different services. You know, we don't have to sing, so we've got them. But I have to, you know, pull hymns here and there, and put them on a CD. So I said, the other reason is, the liturgical parts are consistent and, and familiar, right? So if you come on a Sunday morning, and we're doing this, there's stuff that is in there that we always do, so that, you know, that's part of keeping the anxiety down. Rather than saying, man, you took that out, we're not doing this, we're not doing that. No, we, you know, I'd rather take one hymn out if we need to shorten it, than to, and leave the liturgical parts in, so that there's familiarity. Yeah.
My understanding of that is like being in the Catholic Church, where they say the Lord's Prayer, and they leave off the last.
And they leave off the last part, yeah.
And I'm still talking, and everybody else is going after something else.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, okay. Go ahead, Heidi.
What if we leave the hymns as is, and maybe just reduce one verse?
Well, I, I do that a lot anyway. I mean, we, you know, we leave a verse out here or there. But I'm not sure, because the point of a shorter worship service was, if we were going to have a one at nine-thirty to kind of get a little better people flowing. But I don't think we need to worry about it. I'll be looking at it, and I'll, I'll see what we do. Another possibility, and, so a couple other things on there that we're, you know, we're contemplating is phone calls to all, you know, I do want to check in with you. Maybe the elders can help with this. And we'll, we'll phone, we want to make sure that we're phoning people, just to check in, how you doing? How are things going? And then maybe the pastor and the elders will have a weekly update, you know, whether it's by video or by phone or whatever, just talk to each other. One of the things that we talked about in worship service was the possibility of not kneeling at the rail during the service, just so that people aren't touching the rail. Now, Tom, I don't know if you noticed this, but he had a wipe, and he wiped off the rails after the service was done. And we'll do that again after white service. But if you, but there's a couple of possibilities. One is to say, just come up and stand at the rail. Half of the people who are over seventy can stand at the rail anyway. But we could all do that, and then not touch the rail. So maybe we could do that. What do you think? Or the other possibility is to say, just have a continuous line, so that Rob, in one case, would stand with the wafers, and I stand with it, and you just kind of walk past us. So I don't know how you'd feel. How would you feel about just standing at the rail?
Be a lot easier for some.
Huh?
Be a lot easier for some.
Be a lot easier for some. How would you feel about a continuous kind of thing? No, people don't like.
That's a drive-through.
That's a drive-through.
New challenge.
Okay. I mean, we do, we would, we would do. continuous line communion at a youth gathering, right Nancy? Okay, I'm standing here. Yeah, at the top of a section of an arena that's got a thousand people in it and, you know, they just, you guys walk past. I don't think we need that. Go ahead, Jan.
When the, when the wafers are being distributed, would it be okay if we took the wafer off the plate instead of the man in hand?
Nobody wants that, Dan, I guess. Because then it's, everybody's grabbing it, but go ahead.
Think about trying to pick up a wafer. Every once in a while, I have a problem just picking one wafer up.
I was wondering if you, we could do this, I thought about that too.
Or if you just hold out your hand and you drop the wafer in.
And put the wafer in a cup and then you can pick up the cup.
Wait a minute, I got three things at once.
Pes dispenser.
Pes dispenser. So just, so set the wafer. Now.
Because like there's the, they make those, they make little plastic cups.
They make little plastic cups that we put in the communion tray anyway. Let me see something, Nancy, before you go too.
I don't think they would fit in there.
I don't think they would fit either.
But they do make a little plastic cup and they call, they make them for Jell-O shots.
I'll pray tell. All right, here's the, here's the, yeah, these'll fit. They fit right in the top there and then all you have to do is poke it.
Oh, it does fit?
Yeah, it does fit right in there. And all you have to do is poke it and flip it up. Somebody's gotta load each cup, yeah.
Why don't you just have this, who's ever doing it just wear plastic gloves?
Can we just have it so you just hold out your hand, you put the wafer in your hand? Well, that's what he's doing anyway. Yeah, right? That's what he's doing anyway.
Or I don't think a little clipper's gonna work.
The difficulty with Jell-O shot cups is then you get two different types of cups. And that's a technical thing to try to keep inventory, you know? All right.
Because if you put the wafer on top of the cup, you have to make sure you don't put too much wine in.
Right.
And then everybody will spill the wine and everything else like that.
Right, there's always that. So then, what we used to do at Trinity, they used to do is they'd have half the cups would have wine and the other half would have wafers. Okay? So and what happened was, this is crazy. Somebody built trays, shelves that went on the back of the communion rail. This is my first church. So the trays were on there. And the trays were, half of them had cups of wine and the other had wafers. And I would stand there and go, "Take and eat the body of Christ." And people would go, "Mm, I want that one." Take and eat the blood of Christ, and they go, "Mm, I want that one." It was like, it was like, it was like Holy Communion meets Golden Corral.
Yeah, those trays too, but they were to put the empty cup in.
So, all right, so what we're doing right now is, like I said, I have Purell, there's Purell back there, there's Purell at the altar. We do that, we wash her hands, we do that before we're doing communion. How much more care do you want from us when we're distributing communion than that? Do you want us to wear like food service type gloves or?
Not really, I was just saying that just in case.
You got some gloves you wear when you're working on your truck? The blue ones.
So. Can we carry this too far?
Well, I guess that's part of the question, can we carry it too far? Yeah. Can we carry it too far?
I mean, we've been doing this for years and, you know.
Nobody died yet.
Yeah, I mean, and we are using individual cups. You know, there's been some conversation about churches that are using common cup all the time. It's like, well, all right, but we're not even going there. All right, we'll do, so here's what I think we'll do. If, you know, let's not worry about the distribution, but, you know, let's do standing. Okay, rather than kneeling, just come up and stand and it will be okay. Okay? We may just keep that one. Well, we do it anyway for people who are having trouble kneeling, you know. Don't kneel if you don't have to. Okay, here's some things that we're, that we're not considering, although it's been talked about and maybe even mentioned. Temporarily suspend communion, so just have a worship service without communion. And I'm reluctant to do that, okay, because we've had communion so often. But here's what I need to tell you. In the history of the Lutheran church, and some of us who've been Lutherans long enough know that there were times when we did not have communion every week, right? There were times when we only had it once a month, right? So, so the idea is that not having communion is not gonna, you know, and all those Lutherans like your mom and my dad and whatnot, who grew up with communion once a month, you know, they're in heaven with Jesus also. Okay, so not having communion once a week is not gonna send us to hell. Okay? But we're so used to it and it's so good and it's so comfortable for us, we're not, I'm not even thinking about temporarily suspending communion per se. But, you know, we'll suspend a worship service if we need to. One was age-specific worship services. They're doing this over at Norton where one service is for people over 70 only and the other one is for people who go out amongst the public and work. We're not working on that. Open the church for prayer. I haven't done this officially, but I think I do wanna say, if you or your family want to come to the church and just pray and have a devotion in church, you know, that's fine, do that. If you wanna do that while I'm here, then call me and say, "You know, we're coming, could you be there because we have some questions?" We can do that. Okay? I think that's a really good idea and maybe people will have time to do that kinda stuff. So we might, I might say, "Let's do that." Relocate the worship to the parking lot. You know, that was a thought. You know, if this extends into warmer weather and people are reluctant to come in, I could just take a PA system out to the parking lot. We wouldn't have to worry about FM, but we're not at that point. Communion with medical gloves, we talked about that just now. Every other pew seating? So we'd have to.
Oh, and you're not saying back to behind you.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, or, you know, you've already figured out a couple of these things. Okay, maximum of four in a pew, so that's good. Nobody sits between Rees's and Brown's, you know? So if Gail came in, you know, one of you would have to leave. Wipe down all surfaces after each service. Well, you know, we're wiping down the rails, but, you know, the suggestion was, are we wiping down the backs of the pews? Are we wiping down the door handles? Are we wiping down the bathroom door handles, the, you know, flush things? It's like, you know, I think that's just way too much. Well, I don't know if it's taken it, it's, part of it is taking it too far and the other part is like, who's gonna do all that? And, you know, I don't know. But, so right now, we're doing this. Communion with appoint, by appointment. I'm open to that, not by appointment only, but I'm open to somebody saying, "You know, Pastor, I just, I really want communion, but I'm just really afraid to come on Sunday morning." I'd say, "Well, you know, let's set up a time. You can come, we'll have that private communion thing here at church, no problem." Okay? You know, if families wanted to do that because they didn't want the kiddos out in the crowd, we could do that. I mean, I'm open to that. But not, but that wouldn't be the only way. So we'd still have communion here during the worship service. Try to sit six feet apart in the pews. So here's what we do for that. All guys know what this is.
You don't know what that is?
Yeah.
It's a ruler.
Yeah. Six feet. That's a six, there it is right there. So we'll assign somebody to go there and say, "Okay, what's six feet?" Around six feet apart. So that means one at one end and one at the other. Set there, it's less than six feet.
So we can't get four people in a pew, so that's it, done.
Hi there, this is Pastor Kay Hill. Yes. Yeah, you know what, it's not working here at church. Yeah, it's down today for whatever reason. So we've had problems all morning. Outpost it later on. Okay? Bye. So we may set up some kind of prayer system where we pray for one another. Somebody suggested maybe we could remove the bibles and the hymnals and the friendship pads from the pews. Yeah, we don't use the bibles and hymnals anyway. And the friendship pads so that you don't pass germs. But there is something that we haven't really thought about or talked about and that's if we, if we run across people who have childcare needs or food needs or transportation needs, how might we address those? Okay? So some of you folks have already said, you know, if somebody needs something, like to run to the grocery store, let them know or whatever. But we don't really have a good system in place for that. I don't know if we're going to need that as things progress or not. But keep that in mind and if you've got some ideas on that or if you would like to say, "Yeah, if somebody needs this or that, then I'd be happy to get it for them," you know, let me know. Okay? And then this last group, these last three things are things that I categorize in the area of shortly before hell freezes over. Okay? So cancel worship services completely. Livestream pastors, solo worship services, I'm just not gonna do that. And it was suggested maybe we just don't serve coffee.
What?
Lutherers said the marks of the church are word in sacrament, he forgot about coffee. No, no, if we didn't serve coffee, it'd be really a solo worship. Okay, that's a good question by Bill Dorn here. Is there any prognosis or idea as to how long this is gonna last? And I don't know, you know. I hear everything from three weeks to 18 months to two years. I just don't know and nobody knows. Nobody knows. You know, I have a suspicion, I'm gonna use an analogy that, I don't know if it's a good analogy or not. I suspect it's gonna be like a forest fire. I suspect it's gonna be like a forest fire. It'll last until it burns itself out. And I don't know how long that's gonna be. Hello, Christ the King Lutheran Church? Hey! Okay. That's fine. That's fine. That's fine. Yeah, and, and, oh my gosh. And the internet is not doing what we want it to do today. So when we have a council meeting later, can we call you if we need you? Okay. Okay, thanks. That's fine. That's fine. All right. Okay, thanks. Bye. Okay, so Betty won't be in council because she's coughing, so. So there we have it. We're at the end of our hour. And no, Bill, I don't know the answer to your question. I suspect it's gonna burn itself out and that's what it will be. And nobody does. So we'll do the best we can in the meantime. And we, some of it we're gonna take week by week and some of it we're gonna take day by day. Right? Okay, Jan had one thing and then we're gonna have.
Well, I just wanna say the post office box, the address is on Walton's.
That is, is on the bulletin.
Yeah, it's the post office box 1.
183.
Yes, it's important.
Yeah, didn't you mean to hold that for us so you could see it better?
I'll be better, one of them will. Also, I'm glad that we're able to get together today because where else were we able to actually sit down, have some laughs, get a little, and be with.
Yeah.
Be with people.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
We haven't seen our grandkids for three months.
Yeah.
For Christmas, since Christmas. Because one of them are, were all, were sick here and there. And so.
Well, you know, I'll tell you, we had, we had, Bev and I had, we had plane reservations to go to California the week after Easter. They're gonna, that's off. I have to deal with Delta this afternoon.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. Let's pray and then, because we have to get ready for another worship service here. But heavenly fond that we thank you for your grace for us here at Christ the King and your mercy for us all the time. We pray that you continue to pour on your grace and your care and healing on us daily and ritually, even though we don't deserve it, but because of our sin. But we do get it because we're your children. And we thank you so much for making us your children. So as we go out from here, keep us safe. Help us to look out for the needs of others, to minister to one another, to keep in touch with one another and to share your love with all we did, in Jesus's name. Amen. Okay, and by the way, you're invited to come back for the council meeting later if you want to.[1783.16]